I want to do a song that was written in the 60s, but to me, with consumerism at an absolute peak, and republicanism at an absolute peak, no peaking. And right-wing politics soon to make a comeback. Here's our little tune. We don't smoke marijuana in the Skokie. We don't take our trips on LSD. We don't burn our draft cards down on Main Street. We like living right and being free. We don't make a party out of loving. We like holding hands and pitching wood. We don't burn our draft cards down on Main Street. Like the hippies in San Francisco used to. Come on, guys. I'm proud to be an Oki from the Skokie. A place where even squares can have a ball. We still wave old glory down at the courthouse. The white lightning is still the biggest thrill of all. Come on, Billy. Bless up. Leather boots are still in style if a man needs footwear. beads and roman candles won't be seen. Football's still the roughest game on campus. And the kids here still respect a college queen. Come on, guys. I'm proud to be an Oki from the Skokie. A place where even squares can have a ball. We still wave old glory down at the courthouse. And white lightning is still the biggest thrill of all. Sing it, y'all. I'm the Oki from the Skokie. A place where even...
Councilmember Wright.
Councilmember Wright is here somewhere. Councilmember Robinson is out of town and won't be here. And Councilmember Clay didn't feel well, left work early, and went home and went to bed. So there will be five of us here. Does anybody have any council comments? I'll just say that the, you know, there's the Executive Director of Old Town Business Association. I just wanted to compliment Old Town Business Association on yesterday's street festival. We ordered up good weather way in advance, and nothing happened to make that change. And OTBA and everybody who was involved did a great job of pulling it together. Real good crowd, good music. And everybody I saw enjoyed themselves thoroughly. So congratulations on another good street festival. Councilmember Wright.
Yes, I also enjoyed the festival yesterday. It was very well organized, and people had a lot of fun. The music was great. This coming Wednesday, the New Hampshire Avenue Crossroads Farmer's Market is going to have Children's Day. This was delayed from last week when it was washed out by the rain, but it is rescheduled for Wednesday. There'll be a fire truck there, there'll be music. So if you haven't been to the market there on a Wednesday afternoon starting at 4:00, do try because it's a lot of fun and there's good stuff to buy. Also, the city bus is running trips again on Wednesday afternoons. So folks in Victory Towers and along the route will have a chance to get a lift over there and back again with all the stuff they're going to buy. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I would just like to add that the city bus will, in addition to going to Victory Towers, be stopping at the Park Ritchie Apartments and also the Franklin Apartments on Maple Avenue to pick up customers for the market, Farmer's Market over in Langley Park on Wednesday afternoons. Thank you.
In Tacoma Park.
Sorry. We own Langley Park.
Not going there. Okay. I don't think there are any additional agenda items. I will point out that there has been a request by Councilmember Siemens to pull two items off the consent agenda, which are items D and E. So we will take those up individually after the consent agenda. And as far as an agenda scheduling update, I'll just point out that next Monday, October 13th, we will have a visit from Councilmember Elrich, and we will have a work session discussion on refinement and closure on discussion of council priorities. And the following Monday, the 20th, we will have a visit from County Councilmember Valerie Urban, and we will have a work session discussion on infill development or mansionization. The following Monday, the 27th, we have a work session discussion of proposed amendments to the Ethics Ordinance and a report from the Ethics Commission. And we also have a discussion scheduled regarding regulation of sign placement on public property, which is the item that we took up a couple of weeks ago and said we needed a work session discussion on. Finally, on November 3rd, we will have an update on the Purple Line, a discussion of the council grants program, and a visit from Councilmember Leventhal. So we will be fully updated on county issues and have our chance to have the ear of our district representative and our two resident-at-large representatives. Next item is adoption of the minutes. We have minutes of July 30th and September 2nd in front of us. Do I hear motion to move approval?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Berry, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are now to public comment period, which is the time on our agenda when we entertain comments from the public on any items that are not on our special session items. And in this case tonight, also, that would include the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program and a presentation from the UIA on their revised plan for the Tacoma Metro. We would ask that any of those items, you hold your comments until we get to those items. So it would be anything not on the agenda at all tonight or anything on the work session.
Hi. I'm Rosalind Grigsby. I'm Executive Director of the Old Tacoma Business Association. We put on the Tacoma Park Street Festival, as you mentioned. I wanted to say thank you to the city for all the backup and support that you give for the festival, especially the police and particularly Public Works. They did yeoman service yesterday out there, helping make things function smoothly and really letting the city shine. I think there were a lot of new faces this year. It was a good crowd. I spoke with a number of merchants who had booths, who know their clientele and know the town really well, and they said 60% of the people they were seeing were new faces. So the festival succeeded in bringing people to Tacoma Park and helping them discover the town for the first time. And the city crew really made it shine. It just made a huge difference. So I wanted to say thank you so much for all the efforts and support the city gives us in this experience.
And as you were talking, I thought you might also want to thank the city TV folks.
Yes, you're right. I'm sorry to have left them out. Yes, that's also an incredible boon, and I know they play the bands from the festival throughout the year as well. So yes, thank you to Lonnie and her crew as well.
Thanks.
I want to say the food is getting better, too, at the festival. Frances Phipps, 7210 Holly Avenue. I'd like to make a comment on two different issues. The first, I will be uncharacteristically nice, and in the second, I'll revert to firm. All right. The first one, I really would like to publicly thank you, Bruce, and the staff, I think it was Sarah Danes and Linda Walker, who resolved a very difficult issue for one of our older residents who had been trying to get it resolved for over three years. And apparently, the day after, I made a comment to you, Bruce, things were well on the way. And I want you to know, it really is a life-changing event for that gentleman. So I'd like to go on the record and say thank you very much. The second one is me.
Oh, I think we're going to stop you after the question on the good news.
After 40 years, you know. And I'm not speaking as the Chair of McNAC, but because I will when we come to where we took a vote on it. Last week, I think it was Thursday, five or six trees were cut down at Montgomery College, and it came as a terrible surprise to the most directly adjacent member. And I understand a neighbor, and who will speak in a minute. And I understand that the college explained to the city that the neighborhood had been informed at a community meeting that this was going to happen. Now, I've been very dedicated in going to all those meetings for two and a half years, and I vividly remember the discussion of the renovation of the commons in which they said all the work was to be interior. They talked about the only exterior thing was moving, the air conditioning unit that was nearer New York Avenue, more toward Fenton, and that they would be swapping out some windows. The footprint would not be enlarged. Everyone was very relieved to see that it was just going to be renovation. There was no discussion about the trees, none whatsoever. But I am getting older. So I called two other people who were most active on that block, Lorraine and Jim Evans, and asked them, did they recall any discussion of this at any meeting, even offhanded comments? And both of them racked their brains and said, no, they couldn't. Finally, I understand, and it might be we don't understand the procedures they're required to go through for notification of the community, but this expansion program, which is going to go on now for years, is a very sensitive subject. And I think it would be best if the city begin to establish a certain format for notification of the community when things like this are going to happen. It's just common courtesy. And number two, I'm not quite sure what the procedures were that they did go through to get a permit. I'm glad they went through some procedures to get a permit because two years ago, they cut down five very large trees at the childcare center on the corner of Philadelphia and Tacoma without notifying anyone. And there was such an outcry in the neighborhood at that time that I think they've become somewhat sensitized. A year ago, McNAC had voted to request of the city that they carry out a tree inventory of all the trees on the campus. And I would like to reissue that request again tonight. As I mentioned in one presentation, it is one of the legally mandated requirements that the college must adhere to in terms of preparing their development proposals. And I believe it behooves the city to have that inventory on hand. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Sally, who was the most effective.
Frances, if I can ask you a question?
Yes, please.
The community meetings where this was supposedly announced about the tree cuttings, was that one of the regular McNAC meetings?
No. Well, I don't know what meeting they had in mind because it didn't happen. But they do, there have been two recent North Tacoma Citizens Association meetings that focus solely on the development proposals and updating the master plan. Prior to that, there was a meeting about six months earlier at which the college very extensively and appropriately informed the neighbors of all the work that was going to go on in New York Avenue. But there was no talk then of the trees either. So I'm not sure what meeting is being referenced. It was at none of the McNAC, and as far as Jim and Lorraine remember, it was at none of the North Tacoma.
I would think it was at one of the McNAC meetings that it would be documented in the minutes of the meeting.
Yes, well, and Jim said he was going to check the minutes, and if it were noted in his, he would give me a call.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Sally Booker at 7700 Tacoma Avenue. I'm at the corner of New York and Tacoma Avenue. I just want to maybe add something to what was just said. I'm the person, I was walking by the college on New York Avenue on Monday, and I saw they were taking one tree down. I just assumed it was a diseased tree, since many of them have been. And then on Tuesday, I saw that at least like five or six trees were marked with a big orange mark, and they were just chopping them down across the street from me. And I went over there, I talked to the chief engineer there, who pretty much laughed at me, and told me not to stop what they were doing, and they'd all been approved. So I called the president of the campus, his office, he wasn't there. I talked to his secretary, who made some phone calls, told me that the Tacoma Park arborist had approved this to happen, which is what the engineer also told me, and that it was a done deal. I was told a storm management system was going in there, which I also knew nothing about, and that they were going to destroy the trees and all the tree roots anyway, and they might as well take them out. And they had kept one large tree there, which I guess the arborist told them to keep. But they chopped down two really prominent, beautiful flowering trees on the side, which were also way on the side, which seemed crazy to me. So I don't know, you know, I don't know the arborist, I don't know what his thinking was, I don't know how he communicates to you or to the community about these things. I know, you know, we're held to very high standards about what we do with our trees, and I would only hope that the college is held to the same standards. So this was upsetting. Thank you.
Thank you both, and we will find out what the process was and where things stand, and we will, the council will hear, and we will get word back to you as well, and to McNAC, and to North Tacoma. Excuse me, is there anybody else who'd like to make a public comment at this point?
Bruce?
Yes.
I know I missed council comments, but there were two quick things I wanted to say, and one of them is related to the college.
Okay.
So I'm going to choose to do that now. First was that Bruce and I met with a representative from the president's office of the college and Brad Stewart, the provost for that campus, particularly about the facility master plan, expressed our concern with the plan as it's been written so far, reiterated all of the issues that we raised in the resolution. They have said that they will try and factor in and write into the facility's master plan what we raised in the resolution, and show us a draft, actually, of that. So we're looking forward to seeing that. I suspect that every word won't be exactly to our liking, but many of the items that we've raised will somehow be more appropriately addressed in the facility's master plan. So that's an update on that front. The other thing is that on November 19th, the college Board of Trustees is supposed to get a presentation about the facility's master plan for all three campuses. And I think the actual details of the presentation will be a closed meeting, but there will be a public vote, and that will take place November 19th for people who are interested in that.
And that's in Germantown?
It is in Germantown, yes, Germantown. I think it rotates among the campuses, and it's in Germantown that. And the college generally seemed willing to compromise and try and meet the community's needs and concerns, and I think we need to continue to apply political pressure to make sure that that happens. The second comment I want to make has to do with the Purple Line, and I would just say this to all the elected officials that used to support the ICC, and I think used to think about it like this. Well, there's money for the ICC, and there's money for the Purple Line. Maybe I don't love the ICC, but as long as I get the Purple Line, I'm okay with it. The budget situation is different now, and that's not the case. There's going to be a choice that's going to be, need to be made. And all those people, all those politicians who said that they cared about the Purple Line now need to step up and say, well, the only way we're going to have the Purple Line is if we do something about the ICC and rethink going forward with the entire ICC project. There's a proposal out there to not build the entire thing, and I think that's saving something like a billion dollars. And I think that could be invested in the Purple Line and a lot of other mass transit infrastructure that would actually serve the larger Montgomery County community better. So it's now a choice, and I hope that people start choosing the Purple Line.
Thanks. Any other public comments? All right, we'll move on to the city managers' comments.
Just two brief items this evening. The first is to let the council know that on Friday, October 17th, at 10:00, Montgomery Housing Partnership will be holding a ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate going to a Tacoma Park renovation project. The council has previously provided funding for a number of renovation projects in the city in partnership with Montgomery Housing Partnership. Those are Merrimack Gardens, Crossroads at Flower, and Sligo View. The ribbon-cutting ceremony will be at 1001 East University Boulevard. So if any of you are able to attend, I'm sure that would mean a lot.
Sounds like at least two of us.
Right. Yeah, you'll have the opportunity to tour one of the renovated apartments, and there also will be a continental breakfast provided at the event. The other item I had this evening, which I had advised the council of in an email on Friday, concerns the winter basketball league, which, as you may recall, the Recreation Committee had approached the council during the budget process to request that the city move forward with the new winter basketball league. There were a couple of points that the Chair of the Rec Committee and the Rec staff and I all thought would be appropriate to bring back before the council and just get your concurrence on several key points. This program is getting ready to start. The first is that it's our customary practice that we charge a differential in fees between residents and non-residents. The Recreation Committee has requested that for this particular program, since we're just trying to get it off the ground, that that customary differential be waived and that the program fee for all participants be set at $50. So that was one issue that I did want to give some council feedback on. One of the other aspects of the program as proposed would be a partnership with the Long Branch Athletic League. They would be prepared to field four teams or about 40 kids to participate in Tacoma Park's newly formed league. They do receive a grant from the county for their program, and essentially their ability to join our league would need to be set at the amount of that grant. The feeling from the Rec Committee is that having their participation would be a great start in terms of building a larger league and having more teams for the kids to play with. And as I mentioned, they would be bringing about 40 kids. So that's kind of the second issue. The third is just really clarification for my benefit from the council. When we were talking about the program during the budget process, we knew that we had a vacancy, specifically the senior rec manager position. There had been an impression, I guess, that it was okay for the staff to essentially proceed with funding some of the non-salary-related costs for the winter basketball league out of those salary savings. And the reason I wanted just to bring that back before the council and make sure I was clear about your intent is that sort of the unwritten policy that we've had for a number of years, even predating my tenure with the city, is that departments do not use any salary savings for non-personnel-related expenses. So just wanted to make sure I was clear in terms of the council intent. So those were kind of the three issues, I guess. I was just looking for direction from the council on.
Councilwoman Seaman.
Thank you. I thank you for that report, and yes, I was certainly under the belief that some of the savings on salary that we would realize while we look for a new director, assistant director, could be used for this program. And I'd also like to make sure that we go on record that the, there will be scholarships available for any participants who have a low income, and that those will be identified using the school lunch program, as you mentioned in the email today. And I believe it was $15, you said, it would be the...
Right. What we were proposing, Councilmember Siemens, is that there would be scholarships, as there customarily are, for Tacoma Park residents only. Because the program is only about seven weeks in duration, we were trying to find an easy way to determine eligibility. And as you stated, we were looking at either the free or reduced lunch program. If a child met that criteria, then essentially we would allow participation at a reduced rate of $15.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, and the thought given to an easier way of doing the verification of the need. And I would like to suggest that that's a far less intrusive approach than having people present their personal income tax to qualify for the scholarships. And so I would like to suggest that we use that same approach for all scholarships for the Recreation Department.
Any other comments? Councilmember Berry.
Yes. This is, of course, a startup league, and I think it's a great opportunity to involve a segment of the population that we've not seen involved in some other activities. And I also think it's a chance to build on the success of the very successful youth society. I also think it's a chance to build on the success of the very successful youth soccer league in Tacoma Park, one that involves a whole cross-section of young people from the community and beyond, and also their parents. Therefore, because it is a startup and an experiment of sorts, I think it's appropriate to, you know, think anew about some of the things that we have established in place in terms of pricing and participation and involvement of kids outside the community. And then, let's take a look at it. When the league finishes in the wintertime, we'll evaluate how it's gone, and this will, I'm sure, provide us food for thought for continuing this project for a second year, and making whatever modifications in the pricing and in the participation levels from people, both inside and outside the community. So, I'm very favorable to going forward with the modifications that you have provided us tonight.
I basically agree with Doug, he's always more eloquent than I am.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask about the scholarship program. Barb, you mentioned that that would be for Tacoma Park residents, and I know we've talked in the past about the desirability of addressing the youth in the area, not just limiting that to Tacoma Park residents, and I wonder if you have any feel for what the fiscal impact would be if we opened that scholarship program up to all participants?
Just for this league, Councilmember Seaman?
Yes, ma'am.
Or for all programs? I think it's really difficult to tell. Based on my conversations with the assistant rec director, who's been the primary staff person for this project, he estimates that probably about half of the participants could be non-residents. Essentially, the way it would impact the city would be foregone revenue. I think the staff had pretty much assumed that we were just limited to residents, since that has been our scholarship policy to date. I guess my own recommendation would maybe be to leave that in place pending a broader discussion by the council, but that's certainly up to the council's discretion.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would concur with the recommendations that you brought forward, and I wouldn't want to go as far as Councilmember Seaman's just suggested and make the scholarships available beyond city residents at this point, and I would just like to reemphasize that I think one of the important parts of this pilot is a chance to get back to a broader partnership between the recreation department and the parents who have been so active in some of the sports leagues, and try and reintegrate some of that effort with the city's efforts, and formalize that, and maybe have something that the two parts together are worth more than the two separate. So looking for some synergy there, and hope that this works out.
I would just say I'm also supportive of the recommendations, and I think it really comes down to, to have a healthy league, you need a good number of participants, and it's not really fun for kids to be playing the same kids each week. And so, even though we may be providing a service at the same price for people outside of Tacoma Park proper, I think the residents who are from the city benefit more because we have that aspect, and that's the reason we're not supporting it.
Okay, so you have your...
Yes, and I'm sure the...
You need it?
Yes, and I'm sure the chair of the rec committee will be very appreciative, as will the other members. Thank you.
And this will mean that the flyers can go out, and hopefully we'll have everything pulled together very shortly.
They've been in draft form, just waiting for your decision tonight.
Okay, thanks. Then we will move on to the public hearing on the agenda, which is item number one, which is hearing on the program year 35 Community Development Block Grant Program. We have a sign-up sheet over there, maybe Sarah Gaines, you can bring that over, and then did you want to make any comments before the public hearing?
No.
Oh, okay.
If I could just give the council a quick overview of the Community Development Block Grant Program. If you recall, every year about this time, we go through and decide how the council would like to allocate its, how it would like to allocate the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds that it's awarded on an annual basis. The program is funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and is considered a flexible means of providing funding for a variety of different projects. The primary focus is on affordable housing, job creation, services that benefit vulnerable populations such as this elderly and disabled, and also does neighborhood revitalization and job creation. The primary focus of the program is on projects which benefit individuals of low and moderate income, and that can be individuals directly benefited by the program or the project, or areas that are benefited by the project that are determined to be predominantly occupied by low and moderate income residents. There's a map in your agenda packet, which is frankly difficult to read, but basically includes...
Well, thank you.
Those brown areas, yeah. It's the one I get every year, and I don't like it. Includes parts of Ward Four, primarily north of Brant Avenue, west of Maple Avenue, south of Sligo Creek Parkway, and east of Piney Branch Road. In Ward Five, that area north of Kennebec, and west of Flower. And then in Ward Six, everything east of New Hampshire Avenue between University and Linden. So those are the areas that are considered CDBG-eligible neighborhoods, and projects that are targeted towards those populations are presumed to benefit individuals of low and moderate income. We receive, this year I'm anticipating that for this program year, we'll receive roughly $165,000, though frankly, that amount is in flux, and it varies once we actually get to that year. The funding that you're awarding now frankly will not be available for another 18 months. Whatever is awarded at that point in time, 15% of it has to go to what they consider public service projects, the balance going to capital improvement projects. Past programs that have been funded from the public service sector have included Harts and Home for Youth, which was a transitional housing targeted for at-risk young women, the Tacoma Park Boys and Girls Club for some of their sports programming, the SeaSafe Program, which you're very familiar with, and the capacity building program, which you should also be aware of in terms of the tenant organizing aspects that come out of the Housing and Community Development Department. Each year we solicit projects from the community and from various nonprofit organizations. We received five applications this year, all public service, three of which have been recommended for funding by the advisory committee, which we'll talk about during the work session, and we received no applications for capital projects, and are proposing that those funds be allocated for the city council's affordable housing program.
Okay, thank you. There wasn't anybody signed up on the sign-up sheet, but if anybody would like to testify about the Community Development Block Grant funding, now would be the time to do it. I don't see anybody jumping up, saying "nee-nee," so I guess we will call the public hearing to a close, and we will move to the work session item on discussion of program year 55 Block Grant.
Before I start, I'd like to acknowledge Andy Kellerman, who's one of the members of the advisory committee that participated in the development of the recommendation. Are you gonna come up and jump, Andy? That'd be great. In June, early July, we solicited applications from a variety of neighborhood associations, nonprofit organizations, and just the community at large for ideas or applications for CDBG funds, particularly for the public service sector. We received five, which are detailed in the matrix, which is included in your agenda packet. The advisory committee met, and after going through the five proposals, is recommending funding for three specific projects. The first is Mano Foods, and the amount of $5,000 for their Smart Sacks project, which is, would be the second year of funding for that particular program. Essentially, it's targeted for elementary school children in the area schools, and six kids per week are sent a knapsack or backpack full of food that they are then able to share with their family members over the weekend. The overall impact of that is 153 low and moderate income individuals. They would all be referred by outside agencies, and most definitely meet the FARMs criteria that you were speaking about earlier. Based on the low and moderate income benefit compared to the budget that's been, or the allocation that's been recommended, that'd be roughly $33 per person that's benefiting. The second project that was recommended for funding was proposed by the Crossroads Farmer's Market, for their opportunity in community in the Crossroads Project. It's essentially an education and information program targeted for individuals in Ward Six and Ward Five, that would encourage folks to take advantage of the fresh fruits and the locally grown produce that's available in the Crossroads Market, to provide information on good nutrition, to encourage greater participation with the WIC program, the Food Stamps program, and the special program that's targeted for seniors. The amount again for that was $10,000, which would be used to provide stipends for the bilingual individuals that would be trained to go out and do that education and outreach. So it's sort of a combination, direct benefit, as well as a job training type of initiative. The last project that was recommended by the review committee was the SeaSafe Program's Quality of Life Initiative. This is an offshoot from the results of the resident survey, and again is targeted primarily to Ward Six, that would work with the community and to identify areas where of shared community concern regarding quality of life issues, public intoxication, urination, things like that, and then working with the community, the organizers, as well as the police, to develop innovative ways of addressing those specific concerns. The one capital project that we're proposing is that the balance of the funds, which would be roughly $140,000, be set aside to fund projects or programming that the council endorses through its affordable housing plan and policy, and that will be coming before you sometime later this fall, this winter. And those funding, those funds could be allocated for a variety of projects depending upon the priorities that are identified by the council. It could be for down payment assistance, actual purchase of properties that are then turned over to a nonprofit or a low and moderate income individual, housing rehab programming, foreclosure counseling, et cetera.
If I can get a clarification from you on the targeted areas where you talked about by ward. On the last item on SeaSafe, I heard you say targeting Ward Six, but I see in the packet materials that it says the primary focus is on Wards Four and Five. And then, on the second one, I heard you say for the Farmer's Market one, concentrating on Five and Six, and my question, as you said that, was, and how come not Four?
On this, it could be Four as well. For the Crossroads Market, it could be Four. It would be the individuals that would be counted as far as the direct benefit would be the individuals that are trained for, to do the outreach and the education. So those individuals would have to be low to moderate income individuals. The market for the Crossroads Market at this point in time is primarily Wards Four, Five, and Six, in part because of the bus services provided.
Right, okay. And then on the SeaSafe one?
On the SeaSafe, it should be both Five and Six. Their primary focus is not on Four, and if that's in the matrix, I apologize for that.
Okay, so the matrix should read Five and Six?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
So just to understand, the Farmer's Market Initiative, in terms of the people that are being impacted, the beneficiaries, are we only counting those five people that would be trained? We're not counting the beneficiaries, all the people that they would hopefully bring to the market as beneficiaries because they're getting access to fresh, healthy produce? And I ask that question just because the $2,000 per beneficiary seems like a very high number.
I understand. The original proposal was for the broader market, the individuals that be benefiting from the education and outreach. The challenge is that, from an administrative standpoint, it would be very problematic because each of those individuals would then have to verify their income, and just thinking from a paperwork perspective, we flipped it over into the actual beneficiaries being the people that are providing the education and outreach, or the job training. It's easier to document, even though the indirect benefit will be the people that are receiving that information.
And is that measure, does HUD care about that measure at all? Is that something we're graded on later, or anything like that?
We just need to be able to document the low and moderate income impact. The $2,000 per individual is, it sounds high compared to the other ones that are included in the matrix, but it's not extraordinarily high on a broader level in terms of the programming that they do.
And I guess just the last thing, maybe an easy way to monitor people who come, but is, because I think the Farmer's Market accepts or matches WIC or food stamp things, so maybe if there's a way to determine how this drives those types of customers, you could also include that, would be valuable. It would create a big administrative burden for you.
It's an option, and we can talk to the county about doing it that way instead.
Councilwoman Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the advisory committee that helped to make the difficult selections on which of these to recommend for funding. It's, I suspect, a difficult task whenever there's money on the table, and many people applying, or many organizations applying for it, to decide who should get how much. I know we face those difficult decisions up here, and I thank you, Andy, for your work on this and the committee's work. I, yeah, I'm really torn. I look at this, I certainly can't argue with the recommendations of the committee. I see, I'm familiar with the Mano Food Program in the school, and I know that, you know, they certainly have a need that's far exceeds $5,000, but I, at the same time, can't dispute your recommendation for the Crossroads Farmer's Market, which, by the way, is not a business development, for anyone at home wondering, that's not a business development venture, but it's really trying to reach people with healthy, fresh fruits and vegetables that are lower-income people, that live in those wards that were mentioned. And also, the SeaSafe Program has been very successful and continues to work in a very challenged environment to try to improve the lives of the residents in Wards Five and Six. So I support the recommendations of the committee, but I would encourage my colleagues to realize that CDBG money is not the only money that we need to be thinking about when we come to budget time, that there are similar programs to these, and some of these too, that just needed additional funding. As our economy is changing, these issues are gonna, not gonna shrink, they're going to grow, and there are good organizations that are doing work in our community, and we're gonna see more organizations needing our assistance, and so I think we need to think how we can provide something a little more than what CDBG is able to provide funding-wise for these types of programs during our budget hearings next year. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so do we have agreement that the committee's recommendations will comprise the resolution that comes forward to us? Okay, we have concurrence, so we will do that resolution, and...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Andy, and the rest of the committee members. Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Andy, and the rest of the committee members. Okay, we will now move to special session, and the first item is the first reading ordinance authorizing FY09 budget amendment number one. And Bob, you're gonna introduce that one?
Yeah, so just a few brief comments about this. Periodically throughout the year, there may be reasons why we need to amend the budget that was adopted by the council in June. The proposed amendment that is before the council this evening covers two topics. One has to do with the reallocation of funds within the police department. On September 22nd, the council approved the purchase of a different style of uniforms for our sworn police personnel, as you may recall from the discussion on the 22nd. The funds were initially budgeted in the clothing allowance item, which is essentially a personnel salary account in the police department budget. As part of the city's agreement with Local 400, which is the bargaining unit that represents many of our sworn police officers, it was agreed that the city would essentially pay for the initial outlay for the purchase of the new uniforms. In return for which, we had the union's concurrence, that we would reduce the amount of the clothing allowance received by each officer by $600. So essentially, what the amendment that's before the council this evening would do is transfer funds from the clothing allowance account to a clothing purchase account. The second item covered by the proposed budget amendment has to do with a grant that was recently awarded to the Crossroads Farmers Market, which the council was just discussing as part of the CDBG item. They had previously received funding from the Wallace Genetic Foundation and were successful in getting funding again from that organization. The grant is in the amount of $25,000. The city in the past has served as the fiscal agent for grants received by the Crossroads Farmers Market, were essentially just sort of the pass-through for the funding. So the amendment that is before the council this evening would essentially include $25,000, both as a revenue and expenditure in the special revenue funds.
Questions? Councilmember Wright?
Just wanted to check, is the police, the trade-off between us buying the uniforms and the allowances, basically a wash? Or is one, are we gonna save a little money, or is it gonna cost us a little bit more?
It's essentially a wash or even a little bit of a savings. If you actually add up all the dollar amounts that are included in the amendment, it's actually slightly less than the approximately $28,000, $29,000 that the uniforms are costing. There's no increased cost really for the city.
Councilmember Siemens?
Quick question on that. You have three different choices.
Yes, the purchase of the uniforms is actually done out of the office of the chief division in the police department, but the actual clothing allowance from a budgetary standpoint is actually budgeted in three different places. So we're moving funds from a variety of accounts to the chief's office. 2100 is for the council's benefit, is the office of the chief. 2300 is the operations division or patrol, and 2400 is CID.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. I have to say I'm a little disappointed tonight because I thought the police were gonna be putting on a fashion show so we could see the new uniforms.
I will be happy to arrange one as soon as they come in.
Okay, thanks, ma'am.
And if I can just make a general comment, I'm happy to vote for this budget amendment because it doesn't involve tipping into the unappropriated reserves. And as, as I've seen what's happening in the broader world and the potential financial implications for all of us, I'm loathe to consider expending any unappropriated reserves now or in the near future, just because I think we need to be very prudent in what we might expend. We need to see how various jurisdictions who have potential financial implications for our budget, how they fight with, grapple with their budget problems, federal, state, county. We've had one or two things that have already been put forward, which depending on how events run, we may need to commit. I'm thinking particularly of the Piney Branch Pool, $50,000. We, we had a presentation a couple weeks ago from the police about potentially $30,000 draw on the unappropriated reserves. We have the salary study coming back. We have another potential one for HVAC up in the old second floor, now old third floor. So, as I said, I'm happy to vote on this one, but I'm, I'm loathe to vote going into the unappropriated reserve for any of those other things, although we, we have made a commitment on the Piney Branch Pool. So just to kind of put that on record at this point, so that if anybody's thinking about any unappropriated reserve calls, you'll have to fight through me. Okay.
I move the resolution?
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by, take your pick. And is there any public comment on the budget ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor of the first reading, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will bring that back for second reading. The next item is resolution recognizing the Safe Roots to School Walk to School Day. And I think maybe Sarah, no, sorry, Lucy, Mayor is here?
Good evening. Some of you already know me, I'm Lucy Nair, the Safe Roots to School Coordinator. For those who I have not met, a pleasure to meet you. I'm here tonight to ask the council to approve the resolution to name Wednesday, October 8th, not the 18th, as is on the resolution, Walk to School Day. By supporting Walk to School Day and the resolution, we emphasize Tacoma Park's commitment to pedestrian safety. As you can see, the Piney Branch Elementary School this year has been chosen, due in large part to my being a gigantic nuisance to those who chose the school this year. We're chosen as a host school out of over 30 schools in the county who are participating. So you can see the program that you have in front of you is a result of that, which will all take place on Wednesday, and I understand some of you will be joining us, and that's wonderful. Thank you very much. The benefits are obvious of walking to school. Increased physical activity for the students and their families, decreased congestion and emissions on our roads. Some studies have shown that 25% of morning traffic is school-related. So Safe Roots to School aims to encourage area students to walk to school or bike to school instead of driving in order to accomplish these things.
Thank you. Comments? Councilmember Siemens?
Would like to introduce the resolution with the correct date?
And do we have a second? Moved by Councilmember Siemens and seconded by whichever Councilmember Wright or Councilmember Sniffer didn't get the second on the last one. Any comments? Councilmember Siemens?
I plan on the bike to the event.
And I plan on walking in the event as I did last year, and it was very enjoyable and wonderful to see all the kids walking, and I'll have my two minutes at the press conference, and I plan to talk about the program that I just recently became aware of, which sounded like a great possible pilot for Tacoma Park and for Piney Branch, which is the concept of the walking school bus, where people essentially take the current bus routes for schools and organize the kids and parents to walk that route, gather kids up as they go, and you end up with a school bus worth of kids walking to school as a group. And it would have all of the benefits of Walking to School Day all year long, and hopefully alleviate the need for the school bus. Not that I necessarily want to put the school bus drivers out of work, but I know that when, back in my day, we walked all the time, and I and my friends were a lot healthier for it, and I think it's something that with this program, we could get back to a little bit more than we have these days. I know especially given traffic congestion and danger of crossing intersections and crime concerns, I think it's something that people could take a look at. So I'm very appreciative of your efforts to highlight the efforts at Piney Branch Elementary and Tacoma Park Schools and to bring the program there this year in the county. Any public comments? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We now get to the consent agenda, and I understand that Councilmember Siemens has withdrawn his request to pull two items from the consent agenda. So we have six, seven items on the consent agenda. There are resolution of support for the Mahoney-Hazam partnership purchase of 7610 Maple Avenue, resolution providing for appointments to the Ethics Commission, resolution providing for appointments to the Tree Commission, single reading ordinance authorizing execution of contract for services to develop a 10-year ADA compliance plan for city sidewalks, a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of contracts for services to conduct a citywide missing sidewalk study, single reading ordinance for tree removal and maintenance cleaning, and single reading ordinance authorizing contract for leasing of photocopiers. And given that we have a number of single reading ordinances, I believe the clerk will need to call a roll for the consent agenda. But we have to move it first. I know, I always miss a piece.
I'd like to hear it.
Moved by Councilmember Sniffer, seconded by Councilmember Wright. I can't seem to get all the pieces of the consent agenda together.
We have confidence you'll be able to.
Would you like to call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to the point where we're gonna take a short break and come back for the last item on the agenda, which is a presentation by UIA on their revised plan for the Tacoma Metro. And so we will take that break and get them set up for their presentation, and then go with that.
And in fact, required in their approval was that we work together in good faith to try and resolve some of the concerns, or the concerns that folks in Tacoma and specifically the council raised. So as a result of that, we met back in December of last year, following the Womata Board vote, at the invitation of Maryland Secretary of Transportation John Bocari. He formed what I've called the Tacoma Stakeholders Group, which includes the governor's representative, Secretary Bocari, folks from the Office of Planning in DC, folks from Tacoma. And as a result of that meeting in December, we agreed to meet with Tacoma Parks representatives, staff members in their planner, Nelson Nygaard, to try and address the concerns that had been raised leading up to the Womata Board vote. We did that on January 14th. The EYA and Tacoma Park representatives meet with the Tacoma Parks Planning Consultant Nelson Nygaard to review design options. We completed those changes to the plan in November, and we subsequently met just recently, on September 22nd, with this stakeholders group again to review these changes to the plan. I'm pleased to say that they were very well received and I believe that they addressed many of the concerns that had been raised, and we want to share those with you this evening. This is the plan that the Womata Board unanimously approved back in November of last year. This consists of 86 townhomes, 0.95 acre Village Green, both active and passive components. It included 10 bus bays and two layover bays there in the center, a structured parking garage, two entrances off of Eastern, and then this connection off of Cedar that connected into the roundabout. This is one of the key areas of concern that was raised by the community and one that we sought very hard to address. The other area that was of concern was the access for handicapped users of the metro station. As a result of, again, the meeting, the direct input we received from Tacoma Parks representatives, we developed a plan, this plan in fact. Again, what you'll see here is the Village Green kind of at the center, the same size, 0.95 acres, 82 townhomes, loss of four townhomes. We've included now, in addition to the 10 bus bays, four additional, four layover bays, for a total of 10 plus four. And then some of the other key changes though to the plan were, as I'm sure is obvious, is that this road no longer now connects into the circle, eliminating that conflict that was a concern for folks of the residential traffic conflicting here with the buses. So that was one of the key, critical changes we think that we've addressed with this. It eliminates, as I mentioned, that bus-car conflict. It completely separates the residential traffic from Womata's traffic. And it eliminates that three-way intersection right there at the roundabout. It simplifies the car access for residents to the site. So for the folks living here, they have one point to enter off of Cedar. This is a one-way street and one way to exit out to Eastern, as opposed to in the earlier plan, three connection points. That, of course, we believe makes that a much more predictable and safer crossings on there. Pedestrians now understand where, exactly where cars are coming, they're just coming in the one direction, as I mentioned. In addition to, with regard to pedestrian access to the station, we've widened this sidewalk from seven feet to 12 feet. We've made a second important connection off of Eastern, right along here. That has an eight-foot wide pedestrian sidewalk on that road. We've eliminated two crossings at the circle. You may recall, we had two crossings, three on the circle, there, there, and there. And now we've made that just one place for pedestrians to cross at the roundabout. And we've added a second Carroll Street crossing there. With regard to handicap access, we've, I think importantly, we've opened up this view corridor so that folks coming out of this tunnel now have a clear view through there. Before, that was a closed-off courtyard. So we've made this visual connection or more open, as they say, view corridor. We've added a kiss-and-ride shelter at the point of the park there so that folks coming out for that pickup trip can go and wait in this shelter while if they're waiting for a car to pick them up there at those kiss-and-ride spots. And the other thing is we've enhanced the handicap drop-off by extending the awning. As you may recall, the drop-off for the handicap happens right here in the covered garage. This is a full movement drop-off area. In other words, a Womata handicap van can do a full 360 turn in there, doesn't have to do a K-turn. And then we proposed to cover, have a covered walkway along there to the tunnel so that folks are protected from the elements. Those are the key changes, again, addressing the bus and car conflicts, pedestrian access to and from the station, and handicapped access. With regard to, as I mentioned earlier, the Village Green hasn't changed. The number of homes has gone from 86 to 82 in this plan. And then the parking, the total off-street and on-street parking, the sum has gone from 161 in the Womata-approved plan to 162. So the parking is, in essence, the same. And with that, Mayor and council, we would have to take questions.
Yeah, I have one question on the vehicle movement in this plan. It's fairly clear what's happening with the one-way on the residential piece. And if you can clarify what the bus movement is. My sense is that many of the buses that will be exiting back there on the Carroll Street will do a full turnaround circle and then come back out. But will some buses continue and go out onto the Eastern Avenue exit? And then what the car movements are for any cars using the garage and whether any of the cars use the circle?
Okay, well, my understanding is that some buses currently now go out Eastern, and that would be the same. A bus currently uses Eastern would still have that full movement. The roundabout does allow them to reposition themselves. So if it was a bus, you know, coming into a bay here but needed to go out on Carroll Street, they can do their full turn and exit out on Carroll Street. So to my thinking, there's no change in the current movements. With regard to commuters or people using the garage, they would, again, come in off of Eastern and access the garage here. There'd be signage that prevents them from going beyond that point, just like you'd see on any city street. Do not enter, do not go past. So this is where the commuters would park. And in essence, they'd do the same thing in reverse. They'd come out, make a left-hand turn, and exit out to Eastern.
Okay, so the only mix of cars and buses would be in that section closest to Eastern Avenue, between the parking garage and Eastern?
That's right, it would just be in this section. And that road width right now, that's a 13-foot-wide travel lane. Typically, that's 11 or 12 in the district, so that's just a little bit wider than is standard for travel lanes. Yes, there's two travel lanes, 13 and 13.
And can you say anything about the, any of the pieces at the circle? I know there was some talk at one point about a fence to restrict access for people, just kind of what's involved around that circle?
Yeah, in the earlier plan, Mayor, we had proposed a, there was a big concern that folks had raised about folks dropping off in the circle in spite of there would be signs disallowing that. And what we thought was a simple solution that I would certainly endorse here would be to put a fence right at the curb so that a person couldn't physically, you know, open their door, you know, if they were parked up against the curb and drop off. So, and if they did drop off, they'd still end up having to walk the same distance, if not further, to get to wherever they were going, to get to the station. So yes, I think fencing there along the curb line makes sense. It's just one more deterrent from folks. Go ahead.
Just to clarify, I think the fencing was there because there was the mixing of vehicular traffic, both residents who lived in the townhouses and also residents who could come in and circulate through, back over to Cedar Street in the old plan. This plan does not allow that, so in effect, there are no, there's no need, and it would be prevented at the garage from cars going past that point into the circle. So, you know, this concern about cars dropping off in the circle wouldn't exist anymore. So the need for fencing there probably goes away, probably it's not a necessary thing anymore because there's no interaction and there's no cars allowed in the circle. The only thing that's in the circle are the buses.
Thank you. I appreciate the attention you gave to the concern about people dropping off in the circle, but I, it seems like maybe you missed one of the core issues. I'm fortunate to have many active constituents who have some diminished physical capabilities. Many of them use wheelchairs and some of them are blind. And as I see it with this design, you still have passengers departing the metro and having to cross two lanes of bus traffic and proceed quite a distance to get to the park-and-ride location. I think the issue wasn't whether there's a fence to keep people from dropping off in the circle, but having someplace that is close to the exit from the train that is a safe path that doesn't require them to cross bus lanes to be picked up or dropped off by their, you know, family members or whoever using cars.
There you go. There's a handicap pickup drop-off within the garage.
Right, there is a handicap drop-off here, there is kiss-and-ride along here and taxi stands. So conceivably, you know, that could be done.
They have two choices. They can cross bus lanes if they want to be picked up on residential street, but they can also just either walk or wheel to the left immediately out of the metro entrance into the handicap drop-off period garage, picked up there under cover, and it never has to cross bus lanes.
Okay, I missed that in the presentation. And the other question I have is trying to think back to some of the earlier studies and what they said, the future number of buses that the bus bays would, buses that would have to be accommodated?
Right, I think you're referring to the study from 2003 that talked about 11 bus bays and one layover bay.
Right.
I know, and I know the experts have been here before this council, from both RideOn, Montgomery County experts, and Womata, and have consistently said that 10 bus bays and two layovers more than meets their needs. This is 10 and 4. And I know this is an issue that, you know, has been out there as long as I've been involved. One of the things that we discussed at the stakeholder meeting was to ask Secretary Bocari's office, your governor's office, to look at this issue and to give his input into this, maybe a deciding input. And one of the things that they said at the meeting was that there's been $90 million or projected to be spent on the Silver Spring Center and then the Langley Tacoma Center. They said that's where they're putting their future transit capacity. Tacoma was not a target for increased bus capacity. And again, so there are different thoughts on this, clearly. Womata and RideOn believe this is sufficient. I know there is this study from 2003, and I think asking your governor to weigh in on this makes some sense.
Thank you.
And there was a, in response to questions at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, there is a letter from Secretary Bocari in the packet addressing this.
Yes, sir.
I do appreciate your efforts to improve the design. There is something that, I take the bus at Tacoma, to Tacoma, and I wonder if you'd discuss the design of the bus bays. My observation in the current design is that there's barely enough room in the current design for the situation in which you have broken-down bays and buses need to pass. There's a lot of bus congestion that occurs as a result, buses that stop partway and so on. And by inserting a fixed median, you have made it quite difficult for buses to go around another bus. In the current design, what happens is when there is a congestion issue like that, the buses are able to go essentially into the other lane, if you will, and go around the congestion. The design you have here with the fixed median prevents that. I wonder if you'd talk about that a bit?
Well, I'm not an expert on busing. I can tell you this, though, that we've worked very, very closely with Womata's designers to get these dimensions right. I think a bus bay, and they're very, very specific. So with regard to just the bus bay dimensions, I think that's, they're 70 feet, those sawtooths. But I think what you're really talking about is this distance between the tip of that bus and the median.
Yes.
And I can't sit here today and tell you that, what that dimension is. I mean, eyeballing it, it certainly, to me, looks that it's, you know, more than sufficient for a bus to get by. If one of those were in this, in this distance to get by there. I'm certainly happy to check that with folks at Womata and the folks at RideOn to make sure that there's adequate distance between those four layovers and those five bus bays on the park side.
Yes, what happens is you'll get two Yes, what happens is you'll get two buses, you know, this is assuming, this design is assuming the buses are on time. What happens, of course, is that's not true, and you'll get two buses arriving at the same time they don't have, they end up trying to squeeze in where they can and so on. And this design has a very short space there, the current design has more, you can have a longer bus, if you will, at the end of it. These are, these are pretty short bays, they don't allow, essentially, they don't, I don't think, they don't allow for bus breakdowns, for bus congestion. And once that gets started, once you get a backup like that, then the buses back out into Carroll Street and, you know, then it blocks traffic and so on. It's quite a, it's quite a mess that way.
So, are you, would you suggest you'd like to see that bus area widened?
Yes.
You'd like to see that widened either into the green, I mean, you really couldn't take any of this distance away?
No, because this is already pretty steep, you have the way that...
So you would, you would, you would see this, I think, you know, the first question is the, for me, is to answer is, what do the experts say?
Right, I understand.
In terms of, you know, what kind of clearance do they need? Clearly, nobody wants an airfield there if it's, if it's not needed, if this is sufficient. So, yeah, I'm certainly happy to ask that question. What's the, what's the safe clearance that you need between that bus bay, these layover bays and this, in this bus bay?
Just to clarify, in terms of the length of the bus bays, I mean, they're fully designed to, you know, Womata's latest standard in terms of the length, so I'm not sure they're any shorter than, you know, maybe ones that are out there today are designed well in excess of Womata's standards, but the length of the bay, the pull-out area, the pull-out area is fairly up to their, their latest design guidelines.
That, that doesn't make it a great design, of course.
Well...
I understand that you're just following their guidelines for it. Do you have, one of the issues that has occurred to a lot of us is the, the two-car garage issue, and whether this will actually provide transit or people will just drive their two cars. Do you still have the same number of two-car garage? And I noticed the number of units has changed slightly.
It's gone down to 86 to 82.
Can you use the microphone?
Sure.
Sure.
Yep, it's gone down from 86 to 82 units. Every unit still has two-car parking, except for the ADUs, they all have one-car parking. The...
What are the ADUs, sir?
The ADU, the affordable dwelling units, which are required in the district. With regard to two-car parking, what we've done in the past is we've optioned additional living space on the ground floor in lieu of a second parking space, but honestly, this is, it's a function of what the market demands, and to the extent people do not demand the second space, then we can provide the living space, but to the extent they want the flexibility of having a second garage space, in many cases, people don't park there, they use it for bikes, they use it for other things that you would put in a garage, might be, you know, a home workshop for somebody, but they are designed where you could accommodate two cars parking in every unit still today.
I've just been studying this, the layover spaces and had a question related to that. It seems like a fair bit of coordination is going to be required around what buses use which layovers bays and then which actual functional bus bays they pull into, because if you, for example, if you are the first bus or the bus all the way to the left, you can basically only use the bays on the lower side, otherwise you have to drive out the circle to Eastern Avenue, all the way around to Cedar, and back in to use the bus bays on, on the top side of that, and sort of cascades down the line. Probably the second one can use the first bus bay and the bottom and the rest, I mean, on the top and the rest along the bottom. So that raises a bit of a concern to me about how useful those layover bays are, considering even if they map out the perfect schedule and coordination, we know what happens with buses realistically.
Well, the only thing I'd say is, I, like you, am not an expert on bus routing. I mean, this, this, in essence, this design, this bus layover has been vetted for many years now. Again, I'm open to, you know, having another discussion with Gary Aaron Hyer from Rideon and Phil McLaughlin in Montgomery County, as well as Larry Glick in Womata's office, and you're just hearing it from them rather than me speculating how they, they might use it.
And then I had a couple follow-up questions on the ADA, because I know this is a significant issue for us and for anyone who has a disability. The distance actually, whether you're, so I understand there's actually three pickup places for someone who's handicapped accessible. They could come out the front of the station and go to one of the kiss-and-ride places. They could come down the elevator and go across the bus bays over to there, or they can go along. So one question I have is, don't, aren't all of those options require people to traverse a greater distance than what they have to traverse now?
I haven't measured this, each of these distances. I mean, right now, the existing condition is that you, you are parking out in the parking lot. My recollection is if you're at that farthest space...
No, but I'm talking about handicap drop-off. If you're, if you're getting dropped off handicap now in the lot, we don't have an overlay of how the current site looks, but you're basically sort of right smack in where the median is, maybe even a little bit closer where the crossing is of the circle, so that strikes me as that there's going to be an increased distance there. And then the second question I had is, although, the, I appreciate the increasing the canopy so that someone can walk all the way under a covered canopy, but it appears as though there's bike, and maybe that's just, those can be moved out of the way, I know this is just conceptual, but it seems like there's actually bike lockers right in the middle of where the handicap people would walk or move in their wheelchair.
Right, right, clearly those would have to be moved, those are those boxes. Ideally, what I'd like to find in working with Womata, they do now have a bike person on staff, is to find some better means to secure folks' bikes, but look at opportunities to put them in the dead space in the garage, opportunities to kind of get those unsightly gray boxes minimized or reduced.
Yeah. How many bikes, how many bikes do you envision handling now, that was an issue in the earlier designs?
I believe what we've committed to is, is either 60 or 70. It was in the Womata board approval, and I just don't remember off the top of my head. And I think, you know, council member to your earlier point, it may be a longer distance, I just, I don't know. One of the things that Womata has consistently said is that many of their handicap folks that use this do travel by bus, and for those handicap bus riders, this is as far superior design, and it shortens their travel time. So, to weigh that against those that are being dropped off by, by car.
Okay. Then the second question I had has to do, I just want to be clear on the parking, because I know this was going, we've gone back and forth on this a lot. Currently, the lot has 149 or 150 spaces. The garage you're proposing will have 121, and then your, the other spaces will be on the...
On the street.
On the street. I think it's a private way, but public access street, right?
Correct.
And is there a one-to-one replacement going on there?
Well, the idea is that those would be metered just as the surface lot is today. So in combination, the sum of those, by my count, 123 in the structure, and the 39 on street gets you to 162. And again, metered in the same manner as they are today.
And do we have any, do you have any information about what additional visitors the properties will drive, the townhomes will drive to those spaces? Whether the, you know, because those spaces could easily be used up by people visiting either the live-work or just, you know, visiting people in their homes?
Right, no.
Just, in terms of conflict or time, the peak visitor hours for the residents are usually in the evenings or weekends, so we don't anticipate a huge overlap with regard to, you know, those visitors competing for the Womata spaces. And I think, you know, if you look at studies of the, of the metro today and when the spaces are used, I don't believe the studies showed they were fully occupied on the weekends or evenings as well.
You just brought up the live-work units, can you point out where those are and whether that's a change from the previous plan?
Yes, this is the live-work units, and the way they function is the ground floor is retail or commercial use, and the upper floors are residential use. This was something that was noted in this small area plan that the district approved. And, sorry, and so that's still as, as it was. The design's slightly different, but it's still the same number of units there.
And can you also address whether there's, whether you know of any change in the, what I'll call the plaza, as you come out from the main entrance, the width of that between the, basically the edge of the tracks and those, and that first bus bay in terms of space there, how that relates to the previous plan and how that relates to the current situation?
Yeah, there's no, there's no change to the amount of space that's there, it's still about 50 feet, I believe, 55 feet going across. The one thing we did do is we moved the bus shelters back that were previously floating in the middle of the sidewalk, we moved those back against the retaining wall to provide greater pedestrian access, pedestrian distances, I mean, not distances, but greater sidewalk width between where the buses are and the bus shelters themselves, which was again a request that came through the meetings that we had with, with the city.
There's no change to the earlier plan, but did it change to the current, to about half the size?
I don't think it's half the size, but the question was from the previous plan, correct, there's no change in terms of the distance?
But there's a big change compared to the current?
Maybe you're correct.
Yeah, that was the second half of my question. Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, could you, I misunderstood, I think I missed something. Could you talk again about how the buses are going to circulate into that layover space? The ones on the, I'll call it the south side on this drawing, the bottom side, are they going to have to go out, exit into Carroll, and then where are they going to go to come back in?
If I understand you correctly, the way the buses come in, they use the layover spaces when they first get there, they don't use them when they come in and go into a spot and wait, or if they do, if they drop people off, it's the end of the route, then yes, they'll have to circle back out on to Carroll Street and then, you know, come back into the layover area. But the ones that will come in and park in the layover, they'll either have to go to the circle, circle around and come back to the other side and come into a bus bay, or they'll have to go back out the circle, around, back to Eastern. And I guess this gets back to a previous question about how the buses who may be at the fourth layover bay in gets back to the very first bus bay right off of Carroll, they will have to circulate back out onto Eastern and come back in the site and then come back into that space. And again, I mean, this is something that Womata has studied very closely in terms of traffic circulation as, as Montgomery County, Rideon, and they...
You haven't quite answered it, the ones on the south side, how do they get to the middle? If they, if they drop off the, let's say there's no space in the layover, okay, so they end up going into a bus bay on the south side?
Yeah.
Which is a fairly common occurrence, because the way the bus traffic works, then how do they circulate? They go Carroll, Cedar, Eastern, back in, and then around, I mean...
Again, me or Jack or I are experts in the way Womata plans and Rideon, the way they plan to use this facility in the future with regard to which buses and which routes would be, you know, using which bus, particular bus bays. My sense is, you know, and Gary Alaskis here from Womata, we can ask him if he wants to address this question, but again, their engineers have studied it, I don't, I don't want to speculate how a bus driver's going to come in and drive around and where they're going to go. They have looked at it and they believe that this functions more than adequate to meet their needs, not only for today, but for the expansion in the future. I don't think they would have the...
I appreciate your position, but you, you can see by looking at it, that the buses on the south side are going to have to go Carroll, Cedar, Eastern, in, around the circle, back out again to Eastern, Cedar, Carroll, and in again, if they want to park in that middle, hold layover space. If they start on the south side, they have to go, sort of go around twice in order to reverse direction.
If they start...
That's my, that's my question.
You could be correct. If the buses, you know, wants to park in that layover space, right, they'd have to go out, circle around the circle, come back over, and then back in again, that's possible. But again, I, you know, we can also speculate how Womata plans to, or how Montgomery, Rideon plans to utilize the layover spaces. All I can tell you is...
I'd like to do, I don't have to speculate, I can see the design.
Okay.
If you can point out another way...
I'm not here to argue with you, I'm not here to argue with you, all I'm here to do is present what, they've been very clear with regard to the engineering design of what they've accepted. You can argue with me or you can go argue with Rideon and Womata, that might be more effective, but this is what they have approved, and this is what they've taken to the board, and they believe that, you know, this works for them, so I don't, I can't answer your question.
I hear that and I understand that neither of us are the, none of us are the experts, and we don't mean to put you on the spot necessarily about that, but I think it's more, this is our public forum, so Ruben's raising that concern, and I agree with him. And I guess I would say, related to the experts, you know, we're not experts, you're not experts, but just to rely on the experts makes me a little bit worried, because experts on occasion are wrong in disastrous ways. Our current map down on Wall Street, there's a whole bunch of experts who not, thought they knew exactly what they're doing, and now we have a mess. And also, I haven't read fully the governor's comments or the governor's staff comments, but that's the same staff that thinks the ICC's a good idea over the purple line, so I have concerns about the experts. And that's not a cut on you guys, that's more public comment to the experts, hopefully they're watching. I do have one other, I have a question that's not necessarily about this design, but the city has raised some concerns about the appraisal that Womata has used, and it's not for, I'm not suggesting you guys to defend that appraisal, that's not your responsibility, but if that appraisal actually suggests that there should be a greater income derived and the price should be higher, by, by my estimates, maybe one and a half to $2 million, does that make this project still viable for you?
You know, I'd... First of all, I'm not sure exactly what their appraisal says. Whatever it does say, I mean, this deal, you know, is marginal at best on an economic basis, probably for both sides, and in light of market conditions today, you know, maybe three years ago when this thing was going through the approval process, maybe the project could have afforded slightly more, I don't think so even then, but the reality is in today's world, or anything in the near foreseeable future, it's probably, the project would probably be better off for a million and a half dollars less than what is currently in the contract to pay to Womata.
Thank you.
Okay, so, do we want to move back up here and we'll take public comment?
Yes.
I would like to try and focus on questions rather than making statements. Again, I would thank UIA representatives, Jack and Val for being here, and some of the, as you could see in the discussions that the council had, some of these things are...
are decisions made by Womata. So I would also say that we should be as respectful of them as they have been of us in taking the time to come here tonight. Thank you, Councilmember Wright. And if I could just encourage anybody who wants to speak, happy to have you line up, happy to have you, if you, if you don't want to stand in line but wait, I can recognize some people and, you know, maybe get two or three at a time and then come up and do that so that we don't have a lot of time in between folks leaving their seats and getting back in again. So a little bit flexible on this, and if people could keep their questions or comments to three minutes, we'll try and give everybody a chance to ask their questions or say what they need to say. So we'll start off first with Jim DiWigie.
Good evening. Is this on?
Should be.
Okay. My name is Jim DiWigie. I live on 13th Avenue. I've been involved in looking at this project for a number of years. I'm an architect. I have background in transportation planning and accessibility. Some people in the country consider me an expert on accessibility. I don't know if that's good or bad based on comments about experts. I do have some questions on some issues that I think EYA is responsible for the design for and therefore not necessarily Womata. Number one issue, in the parking garage, you mentioned there's turnaround space as a corner there for public transit for people with disabilities. What did you calculate that to be? What is the outside diameter of the turnaround circle based on a Womata vehicle? Can you answer that question?
I don't know the, what Womata requires, but they made, they required a certain diameter and we designed it.
We did design the parking garage, correct?
In fact, they required the, they required us to do a turn study to show the movement.
Well, I would question your comment that there's turnaround space there for a Womata transit vehicle. It looks like you've got, we may have a curve of about maybe 40, 45 feet at best. I would seriously doubt that you could make that turnaround as you've suggested. Second question, who have you used as an expert on accessibility in the design of the accessible drop-off points?
I don't know about an expert, sorry.
Well, I would venture to tell you that the distance of travel previously for the drop-off point for persons with disabilities was about 75 feet. You've increased it to at least 225 feet. The idea of saying that the primary method of people with disabilities utilizing the facility is coming on transit vehicles is irrelevant in that you have three methods of people getting there. One is the buses certainly, as you suggested. Second is transit, and third is personal drop-off. You have one-way chiseling ride entrance with the drop-off point that were used by transit vehicle on the wrong side based on the one-way traffic coming through the property. Greatest distance that people typically can travel or is used for design purposes for retrofits for existing buildings is about 200 feet. You've exceeded that in new construction. You reduced accessibility. My final point is, you have nine units. Tacoma Park is known as a tree city. You have nine units planned that have, appear to have no green space whatsoever, and four of them appear to have buses going by them frequently on that circle, probably on a, maybe on a five-minute or three-minute interval. I don't consider these things to be marketable at all, and from a planning perspective for residential units, that seems to be highly questionable. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there other comments, questions? Sarah?
A comment and a question.
Sarah, can you just identify yourself?
Yes. My name is Sarah Green. I'm advisory neighborhood commissioner for BO1 in the District of Columbia, and the magistrate station is within my single-member district. And I want to thank the folks from EYA for coming tonight, and I know that it's, you know, it's always a difficult thing to be, to be up here because people have a lot of questions. I've had requests and questions from people within the District of Columbia, and we're going to hold, would like to hold a meeting on October 20th within the District of Columbia so that you can do the same presentation and have the same question-and-answer period. Would that be okay with you, on October 20th?
I'll have to check my calendar. I'll get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much. And the other comment, the only other comment I have is, you know, as a taxpayer, as somebody who's just looking at the billion and something dollars in subsidies that Womata has just received, I just find it bizarre to hear somebody state on the record, quote, "This project is marginal at best for both sides." So we're giving up this ability to have future mass transit space at a time when gasoline, the prices of gasoline are escalating, and we're being told that we have to be on buses and this is the wave of the future. We're giving up that flexibility, we're giving up mature trees in green space, and we're giving it up for a public benefit to our tax, to our metro system that is, quote, "marginal at best." I, I'm, I just--
Speechless.
Yeah, I am speechless. I'm not, I'm speechless, but I am speechless, and I think that, I think that this is, this is a bizarre public policy. And as somebody who's, you, yourself are a taxpayer, and if, as a taxpayer, I think you ought to object to having the public, to having the public dime cover a marginal project. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Is anybody else?
Hello, my name's Megan Scribner, and I actually went down with your map, your plan to scale, and a measuring tape today. And I have to say that after walking through, I've been aware of this plan for a long time, but after walking through with an actual measuring tape, I was more appalled about the plan than I have been in the past. When you were looking at the entrance ways and the bus bays that you have there and your plan and talking about the difficulty in this, well, whether there's enough space for buses to pull out and sort of things like that, it's actually, you have it marked on your, on your own plan that between the bus bay and the barrier that you have in the middle, in some places this is narrow as 16 feet and 70, 16 feet wide, and the buses, we measured the buses today, and they're eight feet wide. And so when you think of a bus going around a bus bay and you have the kind of turnaround that, you know, a bus can't turn like a Prius or a little car, it takes a big space. And so when you look at that, the kind of danger that you're setting up for buses going around, the buses that are there in the bus bays, it's, I just find it astounding that that's what you've done, and that say that it's just what Womata says is okay, and that if you need more space, you can move into the green space, well, that just doesn't sit well at all. The other thing I'm concerned about are the changes that you've made about the location of the entrance to the metro from Eastern Avenue. Eastern Avenue is a very narrow road, often too narrow for the traffic it currently carries. In fact, while we're at the site today, measuring the dimensions of your plan, we were standing there, there was a DC traffic control vehicle there giving a ticket to somebody behind them, and a ride-on bus came along and clipped the side view mirror off the vehicle of the DC metro, the traffic control vehicle. We had to sign a statement to say so when he went back to his office to explain why his side window had been hit by this ride-on bus. And that was just, and that is, in its current situation, well, there's 203 feet between the entrance to Holly and the entrance to the metro. And we're narrowing that to 120 feet. You're taking almost 80 feet to make that narrower. So what you've got is that you've got cars coming in, and there's often now four or five cars that are waiting for this turn to go up and down Eastern and into Holly. So there's already four or five cars deep there, and you're bringing this entrance away to the subway closer to that, and you're having buses come and having to do a sharp return because there's less space there. So it's just adding to an already difficult road situation with a very, very narrow road that you've got in there. The other thing is that when you measure the place where you've got the sidewalk coming along to go into the metro site, you've narrowed it from the space that they have apartments from 94 down to 20 feet. So what you've done to the apartments in terms of what available green space to them and their quality of life is really significant. So just all these things that you've done in terms of this design, it's not just, oh, well, this is what Womata says about what's the basic minimum needed, it's actually, well, what's going to actually work for the area? And I think once you've gone to the point where you've set the townhouses first and transit second, you keep making things so bunched in that there's just going to be accidents all the time and gridlock. Things are going to dock up on both sides, both on Holly and around the bus bays. You've just not created a good plan. Thank you.
Thanks. Other comments, questions?
How much are these townhouses going to sell for? And are they, they aren't going to be sold or are they going to be rented?
In Palos de Arques?
Oh, Diana Vigilis, Penny Branch Road. I've watched the metro for 30 years.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Yes, they are for sale, townhomes. They'll be priced to market at the time that they're built. I would estimate now that they're in the $500,000 to $700,000 range, but when post-approvals, we're selling these three years out, whatever the market is at that time.
And the affordable units are how much?
Well, the district's ADU program requires that the units be sold to folks earning between 50 and 80 percent of area median income. So it's a formula, you have to know what the income is, assume an interest rate on a 30-year fixed mortgage and back into a, to a price, but I would estimate that price to be between $175 and $275.
And there will be four of those?
No, we planned, we planned eight of those.
Okay. Because, you know, there's been a plummet in housing prices recently, and I think there's a glut of housing around the Tacoma Park metro now, and I think that there have been the houses, the townhouses that have built about, have been built around the Fort Tutton metro have stayed empty since summer. So I don't really know if the demand is going to be here for the houses once they do get built. But I just wanted to make a little point, visuals are always best. Right now, you know, the Tacoma Park, I just took the overlay and tried to show the greens part. This is the Tacoma Park metro as it is right now. It's about half-paved already. You know, there's some green space, for those who don't like the word green space, they'll just say expandable area. Once we, once the building is done, there's going to be that much green space left. That's, that's the village green, and I think we need to take that into consideration. That's all.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm Peter Fiden. I'm on Eastern Avenue, right, right across from the project. You know, I've obviously watched this project for eight years now, or whenever it started, and I've always been concerned that it is going to have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood, despite the fact that I think a lot of my residents would like to see some development there. So, you know, after all these changes, I see the changes that have happened to be pretty modest. So I just want to ask about a couple things. First of all, have you made any effort in your design to mitigate the impacts on those who live on Eastern Avenue right across from the project? If there are, I don't see them. I don't see it. In fact, I even saw one plan in which the road, my road was shrunken by two feet. So were you doing anything-- You know, you're adding the traffic of 80 more houses, adding an additional cut into the road, and one of those, as Megan pointed out, conflicts with where the traffic now backs up. But I don't see any effort on your side, but maybe I'm missing it, to try to mitigate the impacts through design changes, improvement in the pedestrian system, what have you?
Well, again, we think this is, you know, this plan reflects the, the smarter the plan that was passed includes, this plan has been embedded through the Office of Planning, through DDOT, obviously through Womata--
I have one more question. I know that I called--
Tell me what the specific impact is.
I'm asking you, I mean--
No, I'm asking for the impact.
I live on a street with 7,000 cars a day passing me. The sidewalk is almost too narrow to walk on safely. There's no buffer between the sidewalk and the roadway. There's no parking lane, so a pedestrian is about a foot from traffic going by at 40 miles an hour. Now, in addition to that fact already, you're going to have traffic coming in at two additional points, and additional traffic of generated by 80 housing units. So given your addition to what is already a problematic situation, are you proposing any mitigation efforts?
I know, Peter, in the past, you, you talked about increasing the sidewalk on your side of the road, and I think that would be an excellent idea for you to--
Well, I don't see it--
If you--
It's an idea, I don't see it in your plan to think it's a, that's a good idea.
But that's not part of the Womata property.
I know it's not part of the Womata property. No, it's not my property either. But your, your project is in the district, and you're going through a plan-unit development process, right?
Correct.
And do you think the right-of-way is, needs to be widened to have a safe pedestrian system and to lessen the impacts on the neighbors there?
I think that's really a question for DDOT.
I think it's a question for you. You're, you're been there eight years and making this a good site plan.
And we think it is. And you disagree, and you disagree, and I, and that's fine.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that I haven't seen any effort at mitigating the impacts on the neighbors. Secondly, have you totally abandoned the effort to provide a 50-foot buffer between the project and the apartment units as called for in the central district plan, since you just referenced it?
Right, and that is a guideline in the plan.
Right, yeah, and I, I guess, I don't, I didn't see it, but maybe I missed it. Is it, is it there now?
It's approximately 45 feet, 40--
Where are you measuring from?
I'm measuring from the building to the curb of the road entering Northeastern.
No, no, the, the buffer between the apartment buildings--
Mm-hmm, and the Womata facilities.
You mean, it's 45 feet from the building to the beginning of the roadway?
Approximately.
All right, we'll have to look at it more carefully. It doesn't, doesn't look like that much. The third thing is that, did you look at any possibility to preserving the two mature oak trees that are on the property? And if you're not doing that, why, why is that?
I have not looked at preserving the oak trees.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Yes?
Hi, this is my first Tacoma Park city council meeting, and so this issue has brought me out. I just learned about this issue very recently.
If you could please tell us--
Oh, I'm sorry, Vanessa Dixon. I hear a couple of concerns. I'm, I'm just learning, so I'm just processing all the information. And one of the concerns I hear people talking about is that these plans won't allow any expansion of the metro station. That the plans won't allow expansion of the metro station, so you'd be increasing the population by building the townhouses in addition to the other causes of population increase. So I just wanted to get your thoughts about the impact to our public transportation system given that increase in population in addition to the other increases in population, that we will need the public transportation system to, to be flexible so that it can be increased, and that these plans will have a negative impact, potentially have a negative impact on that. There was a plan that I saw yesterday at the, the street fest-- There was a plan that I saw yesterday at the, the Street Festival. And I don't know if you guys, I don't know what organization developed that, but it looked like a wonderful plan, an alternative plan, and if any consideration has been given to that. Third question, I'm glad that you guys came to this meeting. I hear residents asking questions and either you're not able to answer questions or you say it's the responsibility of someone else to answer those particular questions. So I'm trying to figure out, what is your point in being here? Do you want the buy-in of this community? I'm, I'm trying to figure out what you want from, from Tacoma Park residents. And what is the role of the city council, the Tacoma Park City Council, in this plan? If this is DC property, it has a dramatic impact on Tacoma Park, Maryland. What is the role of this body in this process?
Okay, I may not get them all, so if you bear with me. I think, you know, what, what we're seeking for, obviously, what the WAMADA board wanted, what we want is to have the support of the Tacoma Park City Council and the, and the larger community. The, the, I guess, legal role in this is that they've been committed to be given standing by the, the Director of the Office of Planning in DC in the PUD process. That's the approval process that this site will go through. Because as you point out, it is in the district. So, so that they will be able to give testimony to be considered by the zoning commission at the time they make a decision. Let's see. Help me out. Go ahead.
Um, you answered two questions about the, your plan kind of here.
Right.
Is that Tacoma Park City Council has a role in the process, therefore you want the buy-in of the community, the buy-in of the city council?
Let me just, yeah.
Something the other, I'm sorry.
I was just going to answer that question again with regard to the buy-in of the community. Just again, this, I appreciate that you're new to this process. I mean, this has been going on for about eight or nine years now. And the reality is, in terms of the process, this is actually, you know, went through a small area plan in the district first. And the plan was designed in two ways. One, to respond to the small area plan. And then secondly, WAMADA, and I know there's lots of comments about how the townhouses came first, the reality was, the WAMADA needs have always come first in terms of the layout and what they required for facilities has always come first in the process. The WAMADA board has approved the previous plan. We came here tonight because after the WAMADA board, as Jack mentioned earlier, approved the plan, we were asked to make a good faith effort to meet with the city of Tacoma Park to try, try to address some specific concerns related to handicap accessibility and the interaction of buses and cars, pedestrian safety. And we've done that. We started that process basically almost a year ago. We met with their consultants. We revised the plans to address those specific concerns. As far as the district is concerned, yes, they've recognized that the city of Tacoma Park and their city council does have standing in the PUD process, which technically means they'll be recognized when the PUD process comes along as somebody who had this, has an impact on. But as far as buy-in, I can honestly say that we didn't come here tonight feeling that we absolutely had to have the support of Tacoma Park to move forward with this project. There are many people, the council member for the district, if this is in, in the District Columbia, the Office of Planning, the mayor, others have been pushing for many years to see this process move forward so that whatever economic development benefit can come from some development at this station can occur. So buy-in, you know, would it be nice? Sure. But we didn't come here necessarily for that. We came here in a, in a way to inform people about the changes that we made in response to a request by the governor's office that we come and meet and try to work out some of these issues. So there's a little bit of distinction. I'm not saying we wouldn't like the buy-in, but that's not why we're here. If we don't have the buy-in, it's not to say that this plan's not going to move forward. I mean, it has, the old plan has been made, has been approved by the WAMADA board. And I think that's probably the plan that would move forward, even though I think that we would consider making these changes if that was the direction that the city council would like us to go in.
Okay, so the, the other two questions have to do with, there is another plan. I don't know how to characterize it. There is another plan.
Again, if it's the same plan, I haven't seen it recently, the same plan that, I forget who the architect, what's his name? Les, Les, Lex, Lex's plan. You know, as I recall, that plan had underground parking, it had multifamily units. In our meeting with the stakeholders, we made it very clear that anything, and I know there's been comments about my point about this being marginal, and it's marginal today because of the realities that somebody pointed out in the real estate market today, that yes, housing prices are depressed. But if you were to switch to a plan that had underground parking and above grade or multifamily, you would probably need triple the density to make it work. So instead of 80 units, you'd be looking at 240 to 300 units. And I believe the buy-in density for this site allows as much as 400 to 500 units. So we have seen the plan, and honestly, I can tell you, it is totally uneconomically viable, far worse than the plan that's out there today. So for a plan of that nature, of that prototype to go forward, it would be dramatically more dense than what's being proposed in the townhouse form today.
And so the last question has to do with the impact of the plan on public transportation and the inability of the metro station to expand.
Yeah, I know we've, we've taken this position a number of times tonight, that, you know, we don't design the WAMADA facilities. We do hire an engineer. Our engineer, again, we're developers, we're builders, we're not necessarily, we're not engineers ourselves, and we didn't do the technical design of the, of the WAMADA facilities. We hired an engineer, a licensed PE, who went many times and met with WAMADA people, their engineering staff. And together, they were the ones who designed the facilities to meet all of WAMADA's current and future standards in terms of what they expect their needs to be. And so, you know, that's, I just, I mean, I can't say anymore. There's a difference of opinion as to what, you know, the station needs to look like 10 years from now, 20 years from now, or 50 years from now. But based on Montgomery County officials, the people from Ride On, who also use that facility from a bus standpoint, and WAMADA, and I know, you know, we all kind of discredit experts because of the financial crisis today, the experts got us there, I guess was the comment. The reality is, I still, when I, when I go to a doctor, I trust his opinion because I'm not an expert in my own medical condition. And so when I'm looking for somebody to tell me how many buses need to be there, I expect the experts who run these bus facilities to know what their expectations are. And yes, we can doubt them, and maybe they're not correct. But that's all I can do as a layman when it comes to transportation is to rely on those experts. And that's what we've done in this situation. And so if there's a debate over whether or not the facilities are sufficient for 50 years out, I mean, you can have it with me, but I would encourage you to have it with WAMADA. And they will continue to come back and I think and say that those facilities, and that's why the WAMADA board that has representatives of all the jurisdictions involved, they are the ones who have voted that these facilities meet their long-term needs. I think Jack made the point earlier that one of the things they are considering is the fact that they do not want this particular station, because of the nature of the environment around here, to become a hub like downtown Silver Spring. So they've made decisions with regard to two other locations to invest hundreds of millions of dollars to increase capacity in those locations and keep the frequency of bus service in this area. And they do have the ability to increase, you know, the bus routes and things like that, even with the number of bays here, by increasing the frequency. But they don't, they're not designing this or planning on this being another pad joint down down Silver Spring. They want this to be the type of facility that it is now and plan to accommodate the traffic and bus increase activity with facilities that they're, that they believe are sufficient for the future.
So the one question that I didn't ask, that I would like to ask after you said all that, is that you said you don't need the buy-in from Tacoma residents.
Correct.
You know, we have about it. But the residents.
I would say move ahead without it. We can go through the PUD process, and the zoning commission of the District Columbia will make the decision.
Okay. And, you know, there's talk about experts. I think legitimate, you know, talk concerning about the opinion of experts, and it may or may not be.
Right.
But one thing I will say favorable about experts is that people here, residents from Tacoma, are experts in this community. And so they're, they've asked questions, and there's still, you know, outstanding concerns. So as part of the process, do you have any plans to address those remaining concerns?
We, just like we have, you know, to come back with revised plans, you know, tonight, we're constantly evaluating issues and things that are raised to the best of our ability. In some cases, there aren't always the ability to make changes. And at some point, the plan has to move forward and allow the zoning commission to make a decision one way or another. So there's some things I've heard tonight that we can take a look at, but my sense is that you won't see any dramatic changes. You won't see a, a different type of housing. You won't see underground parking. You won't see multifamily units. The basic elements of the plan will stay intact, and that plan will go forward.
Was it talking?
For it to go forward to the PUD process. Right now, the plan is in the FTA approval process, which I don't know exactly how much longer that takes. I assume another month or so, Gary, maybe two months, in that range. And then following that, we begin preparation with PUD, and will likely be in the PUD approval process next spring.
Okay. Thank you. Sabrina.
My name's Sabrina Baron. I'm the president of Historic Tacoma. I've been appalled by this plan ever since it saw the light of day. It's not right for this community. It brings suburban sprawl to this community. It's been labeled transit arraigned development, and that's simply a developer's gambit. I'm a historian by training, by profession, and my husband tells me by inclination. But a phenomenon in history that's called revisionism, where you make the, where you make the analysis fit an ideology, whether it's representative of the facts or not. I think we've heard a fair bit of that tonight. For example, as I recall, there were townhouses planned for this site before the central district plan was ever done. The central district plan was done to justify the construction of townhouses on this site. Nothing else was ever, ever considered. I've, I've been to more meetings. Well, as my grandmother would have said, if I had a nickel for every meeting I'd been to on this issue, I'd be wealthy by now. We can tinker, we can wordsmith until doom cracks. And this plan is never going to be right for this community. Period. Paragraph. I think that, you know, the comments tonight, there's, you know, it's moving pieces around in a Chinese puzzle box, is all that's gone in here. There's been no substantive addressing of any of the very serious and genuine concerns of this community. I'd be very interested to hear about this stakeholders group. My organization, Historic Tacoma, and a group of citizens that I've been working with for a number of years, have repeatedly expressed a desire to meet with EYA to talk about this since the WAMADA board approval. And that request has been denied. That request has not been entertained. EYA has chosen to meet with elected officials only. And I would submit to you here this evening that the real stakeholders, the people in this room, the taxpayers who have been invoked, this is public land, going to a private developer, and the real stakeholders in this community, the people that this project is going, is going to affect now and into the future very deeply and very seriously, have been cut out of this process in recent months. And, you know, it'd be really interesting to know what the motivation behind those actions are. It's very fortunate that we have elected officials like Chris Van Hollen, like Barbara McColsky, like Ben Carden, and like Donna Edwards, who are standing up for the rights of Maryland taxpayers, Maryland commuters, Maryland transit users, in their concerns about this process. And I'd like to end by going back to Sarah Green's, I think, very interesting question, a question I asked a long time ago when EYA was talking to the community. You know, if, if this is such a painful project, there's no great profit return, WAMADA's not making any money, which the FTA decrees WAMADA must make adequate return, $2.5 million. That's not even one day's operating expenses. Not even one day's operating expenses for WAMADA. They're guaranteed out of this. Then why is this project going forward? If it's marginal for everybody, it's wrong for this community. Why is this project going forward?
Thank you. Other other comments?
I own the property next to the proposed garage. That is a second apartment complex. I lived in that apartment for the last almost 20 years. And to answer your question about the number of vehicles that use that road, they might have increased 400, 500 percent in the last 20 years. Yes. So with your proposed project, it definitely gets much, much worse. My question would be now, the two roads, the one that comes from Eastern Avenue to the garage, and the one that comes from Carroll to the garage, will they be one-way or two-way streets?
There isn't a road that comes from Carroll to the garage. There's only a road that comes from Eastern.
No, the buses will use.
I'm sorry, you, you asked, two roads to the garage. There's only one way.
From the garage to Carroll?
Uh, no, you can only, for the garage, you come in off of Eastern, you go into the garage, you leave the garage, you come out back onto Eastern. The buses come in off of Carroll and can come in and do the circle and the loop, and then go out off of Eastern or come in off of Eastern. So the buses can go either way, but for the garage, it's only Eastern and in and out.
So my question is this. The road is already too congested. And if all the buses and other vehicles are going to come in from Eastern to the garage or to the whatever area there, and to the townhouses. And if they are going to come out by Eastern, there could not be any worse situation as that spread than that I could think of. So one-way street coming from Eastern, going by the garage, and coming out by Carroll could have made a little bit more sense, I think. Thank you.
Thanks. Other questions or comments?
Good evening, Faith Wheeler, Nancy Commissioner, and Susan Hovio Two. I represent an area that is not, in which the Tacoma Metro State is not, is not mine. It is next door, as is Tacoma Park, Maryland, next door. However, my, my constituents are very much impacted by this proposal. You notice, well, I just want to correct a couple of things. The, you said that the alternative proposal suggests underground parking, it suggests in fact, surface parking, an additional layer on top of that, additional level.
I should have said structured parking.
No, I think, I heard underground parking. And it does not. Jack, unless you referred to the 2003 Tacoma Transit Study, which this, which your calculations, I think, rely on. We've had a number of changes since then. And in fact, the 2003 Transit Study was already outdated. And now we're at 2008, going into 2009. So it's a little bit disturbing to hear that it's not updated still in designs. I am concerned particularly about buses. I'm concerned about how our metro rail capacity maxes out. We do, we will be able to still, if, if your design goes forward, still be able to transport our residents from their homes to work and back again. There will be a time when it maxes out. We have a two-track system. It will never be a three-track system. It will never be a four-track system. The most you can expect is eight-car trains at some point in the future, and several hundred million dollars in the future to pay for them, in addition to replacing the 30-year cars that are wearing out, which is also several hundred million dollars. So the, the concern is, is quite serious. The suggestion of buses going to Silver Spring and to Langley Park or Fort Tutton, if we're not able to get on Metro, then how would we get to Silver Spring and Fort Tutton and Langley Park with a reduction in, well, we're trying to, in fact, the nation, those of us who are concerned about this sort of thing, are certainly trying to promote a reduction of use of cars, not an increase. And an, and an increase, in fact, in public transportation use. Just a little bit more, you have, you're proposing simply one additional bus bay, not more. That's a real question. Relying on experts. Talked about doctors. I can give you some personal history about doctors and my questioning doctors, which in fact, saved my daughter's life. Sounds important. I have that experience.
...for the site will probably include structured parking, if only to allow a revitalized commercial corridor there to take advantage of the structured parking on the site at off-hours. So I think any, every plan that's been proposed, including the EYA plan, includes structured parking. And the question is where, you know, what parts of the site should be filled with asphalt? Do we want to fill the valley in the back of the site with asphalt, which is where all the runoff goes? Or do we want to create a real village green? And I think that the whole townhouse concept has gotten ossified and set in stone in a way that really forces you guys into a bad investment, especially in this economy. And I would just urge you to protect your existing investments, you know, maybe enter into an agreement with the local municipalities to find a higher and better way of doing something with the site that the community actually wants and that protects the investment you've already made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
It's getting sort of late concerning--
I'm Catherine Tewes, I'm chair--
Behind the speaker, it's getting sort of late, and we're going to try and keep people to their three minutes and make sure we get, be respectful, everybody, get everyone's comments. Thanks.
I'm going to try to keep it short because I have a toothache. I'm Catherine Tewes, I'm chair of the Environment Committee here at Tacoma Park, the council on environmental issues. Now, can we have a second? In opposition to this development, you may have seen some of the earlier comments that we provided at your workshop, which were largely ignored. Basically, they responded to say, "We'll comply with all the environmental laws," which I thought was a complete cop-out. It was very irresponsible and inappropriate response. We oppose it because it is not transit-oriented development. Two-car garages encourage cars. Large houses encourage wasteful energy. People should not be living in huge townhouses, which I know is what typical EYA does. So from the energy uses, impervious surfaces, you know, paving over that law is just inappropriate. The alternative development design is much more responsible and I think would be much more attractive in this community. And I don't know what to say. I mean, I'm really glad that Sabrina stood up and talked because as a citizen of this community, I'm just amazed that you would do this and keep on blundering through when, you know, the community is obviously in opposition but has also tried very hard to work with you on responsible development. And yet you keep, you know, going with your bullheaded ideas. So please withdraw this development. It's just not appropriate here.
So the community would support a multifamily of 300 units on the site?
I'm sorry?
I said the community would support a multifamily building of 300 units on the property?
I think you would need to have a discussion with the community about that. There has been an alternative plan that has been put forward that many people in the community have supported. You know, it's really, one of the things that has bothered me is that I have been told by some of my coworkers at work that, "Oh, the Tacoma Park community is just a NIMBY to be opposed to this EYA development." It's not. There's been no opposition to the green building across the street, no opposition to the one on the other side of the tracks. And yet this one is just, it's just not appropriate for this community or for any community in this day and age. So, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, but you didn't answer my question. So, I mean, would the community support--
I can't speak for the entire community.
Would you?
I can speak for our committee after we've had the chance to consider other alternatives.
But significantly higher density in terms of another alternative is something that-- I'm just curious.
We did speak in the workshop, and I, again, when I was at the workshop, I was there as one person. And the group did talk about the alternative development, which would be, would have been much smaller units. It would have been basically a development on the current impervious surface, which would have retained the parking spaces because they would have been underground. It would have had retail space that people could have spoke to, and I apologize, Josh.
It's my fault.
And also then smaller developments, condos, basically on the upper levels. And, you know, it was something that was generally much more positively received. So.
Thanks.
Live in Tacoma Park, Maryland. Lived here most of my life. And, I don't know, I have some, you know, the candles-on-the-tape cake-type comments and also some comments just about the cake in general. And I think the, my general comment is, I really think the plan is too congested for the site. I think there's too much going on up there. It's going to put too much, so I think increased density is a bad thing. I think it's going to put too many cars on the road up there. You know, we've been citing different experts tonight. I think the Tacoma Transportation Study is one of the ones that said that those roads were failed intersections a long time ago. There's only more traffic there now, and I think it's only going to get worse with 82 or 86 or however many townhouses it is with new cars in there. So for that reason, I have a general concern about that, the density of the plan and the impact on the neighborhood and the small roads. And that does also have an impact, as we know, on the transit functioning of that station because there's buses on those roads, too, that have to get into the station. So I think that is a serious concern. And as we know, there is no room for any expansion of transit services now with all the, you know, the dense planning on that site there. I have some specific concerns also that I want to mention, and here's one that somebody mentioned to me tonight that I hadn't thought of before, which is, where are you going to put the snow? There's a big snowstorm. There really is not very much room to pile up the snow. And it sounds sort of silly, but it's a real concern. The buses have to run all the time and people have to get access to the station, and it's something to think about. With respect to the parking, I think, is that Jack Lester?
That's Jack.
Okay. I think that he mentioned that he was counting 176 spaces as the current number of spaces and--
How do you get the current number?
As the--
Somebody else--
Replacement number? Well--
What I--
There's a lot of that control on this parking all the time, and I think pretty much we know there are 121 in the garage that's proposed, right? And right now, there's either 152 or 149 surface spaces. And there'd be 121 in the parking garage. If you add various numbers to that, you get up to 176. Is that correct? I thought that's what I heard you say.
Well, my numbers were 123 and 39.
Okay.
If that math is right, it would be 162.
162. Well, I don't know that number. What I was going to point out was, in one of the earlier plats, shall we say, the penultimate plat, I think, that you had, the number 121 is increased by up to 176. And it includes, in that number, it includes eight kiss-and-ride spaces, three taxi stand spaces, and two handicap spaces, which probably I don't think are really reasonable to include in your count.
Those aren't included in the 162 that I said.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I can't do the math right now while I'm standing here, but I do think there has been an effort to try to bump up the parking numbers by including, like, existing parking spaces that are on, that's on-street parking. And I don't really think it's reasonable for you to count that as parking spaces that you're replacing when they're actually existing there now as on-street parking. So I just ask you to, that's just my comment on the parking count. I have concerns about, I still have concerns about the traffic circle. I think you probably mitigated somewhat by taking some cars out of it, but cars, I think, will still go down there because it's the closest place to the elevator drop-off. It might not be legal, but I think it'll happen, and I still think there's a real concern there about the safety of that. Plus, I think you've got a crosswalk going across that circle, which is not a place I'd want any of my children to cross the road. I can tell you, that looks pretty frightening to me. I agree with Councilman Snicker. I'm really confused about how those buses are going to work, and I just can't understand how those buses on the south side ever would get back to the center, to the central layover area. That's a puzzle to me. And I mean, reasonable people, I think, should be able to understand the drawing, but I was unable to do it. And I also did want to mention that, with respect to that, to the buses, let me just mention that in the attachments that went in with that FTA submission, the, I don't know about, like, the accuracy of any of these anymore. The one from the ride-on person is dated March 2006. You know, a lot of concerns have been raised about ride-ons, continued accessibility by Ike Leggett and some of the Maryland representatives, including Congressman Van Hollen, you know, whose support we really appreciate. But I, this letter is included in the FTA submission to show concurrence of the ride-on people with your plan. And it does say in here that, I think they say that it would be functional, the number of bus bays would be functional. However, the center island layover is not desirable, but we're sure of the layout of the purpose. In this layout, we are concerned about potential conflicts with layover buses and regular service buses. So I think that concern about Marinus tonight actually appears to me to be reflected in the official submission. Also, in the Womata submission that went in with the FTA plan, if I'm reading this right, and I'm sure, you know, Mr. Malaski knows more about this than I do, but, you know, the experts do, but they say that, they think that five layover bays would be sufficient, and yet we've got four. So, you know, I don't know what that's about. But in any case, and I appreciate you coming out, I really do, and I really, I am a member of the community. It's real important to our community, and I know it's no fun to listen to all of us yell at you, so thank you for coming out, and I hope you'll keep listening to us. And I hope, you know, it's not just an exercise in, you know, using up your evening. It might have some impact on what you decide to do. Thank you.
Thanks.
Seth Grimes, 7300 Willow Avenue in Tacoma Park. Thank you to the council for inviting EYA here this evening, and thank you for attending. I will start off with one small point and then get to the major point that I want to make regarding the transit capacity of the station. I don't believe that the transportation planners whom you cite as experts were looking at changes in the situation in this part of Montgomery County. For instance, the Tacoma Park City Council's been working very hard with Montgomery County, the state of Maryland, and this Georgia's county to promote economic development along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor that I would assume and hope would include additional transit that would originate in the Tacoma Metro Station along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. In addition, we have Washington Adventist Hospital relocating from Tacoma Park, that would be in maybe about five years, to Route 29, Colesville Road, an area that would be served again along New Hampshire Avenue possibly, but one that would be very important to connect with transit systems from Tacoma, given the patients who currently rely on the hospital facilities here in Tacoma who would presumably want to use them at Route 29. In any case, the bulk of my remark is to say that you were playing by the rules eight or nine years ago when you engaged in a process with Womata. It's too bad that Gary Malaski from Womata has left the room about three minutes ago because really, Womata's processes were the original sin in this whole situation. They have, in fact, reformed these processes in meetings in which Mr. Malaski's boss participated. They saw that the joint development process as it existed in 1999 was deeply flawed in that it didn't involve community consultations from the start. That said, you're an inheritor of that process, as are we, and we need to find a way out of the impasse that we're in. Perhaps you don't see this as an impasse because you are moving forward, yet the community is doing all we can, and so is the city of Tacoma Park and numerous elected officials in Maryland, and some elected officials who are closer to the ground with constituents in DC to oppose what you're doing at every step that we can. And of course, there are additional opposition points if you do manage to make it through the Federal Transit Administration. The way out of this impasse is to redesign the plan, to put the parking underneath the developed structure. Mr. Evans, have you dismissed this as meaning 300 units in order to make it economically viable? If you have a bona fide legitimate study that shows this, will you please share it with everyone who is a stakeholder in this process? I want to see figures that show that this is going to entail 300 units to be economically viable, to see that it's going to cost three times as much as you alleged earlier. What I know is that pursuant to Catherine Tewes's remarks, that you are creating much more impervious surface with environmental and ground, stormwater impact that costs us in other ways than financial. You're creating a situation that costs us in terms of safety and accessibility. So these are perhaps non-actual costs as far as your wallets are concerned, but they're very real costs that need to be measured. You are also incurring costs for yourselves in dealing with the community opposition. I would say not only that the opposition you are facing would evaporate if you changed to a plan like the one that has been presented in concept form as an alternative, not only would it evaporate, you would turn people like me, you know, I've spent probably about six hours over the last few days interacting with congressional offices, you would turn people like me and most of the others in this room into proponents of your development. Where six or eight years ago, we wanted to see preservation of the green space, we now accept that inside the Beltway land that's developable next to a transit facility is at a premium, and we are willing, we're happy to share our community with additional residents who want to join us here. But you have to facilitate that in a way that makes sense for them, for the community, for transit. You haven't done that. So you're looking at costs, you've made, you know, you've tossed out some figures. Show us some real calculations, bona fide calculations that are believable by us, that prove at that point. And, you know, if you've proved that point, well, we'll stop arguing about having under, or at least I will stop arguing about having parking underneath the structures. But please prove that point. And if you haven't really actually done an evaluation, an economic evaluation, please do that now. I'll close by pointing out that the three buildings, the three residential buildings that have gone up in close proximity to the metro station over the last couple of years, those being elevation 314, Cedar Crossing, and the Gables, which is now open for rent as of just a month or so ago, all three of them have their parking underneath the residential structures. Somehow, the developers of those buildings now get economically viable to put their parking underneath the residential structures. There's a fourth development that's been planned, which is very nice, and the architect had a process of cooperation with the community in consultation called Echo Park, which is just a block from the metro station. The developer there can't get the construction financing for reasons we all understand, economic conditions. That fourth building going up in close proximity to the metro station is designed to have two levels of parking underneath the residential, mixed residential-commercial structure. Please show us some bona fide numbers that we can believe that show us this is not viable. And maybe you'll surprise yourself and find out that it is, and you'll be able to modify your design, and you'll be willing to do that. And you will see opponents of your development turned into proponents. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Gold. I live on Baltimore Avenue, right around the corner from the proposed development. First off, let me just say, I'm trying to come lately to this whole process. This is the first meeting that I'm attending, although I have followed it in the papers. But I did want to just make one observation, and that is, the premise of the development seems to be the need for these, you know, two-car garages in the units. And, you know, in my mind, that represents a fundamental misunderstanding of what people who would think of Tacoma Park as a home are looking for. Has nothing to do, frankly, I mean, I'm not saying that I'm not an environmentalist and that I don't support those objectives, but merely from your self-interest, I just think that if you're looking for things that are going to sell units in Tacoma Park, you're doing yourself no favor by having two-car garages. You know, most of us live in houses that were built in the last century or around the turn of the century who don't have garages at all or have small garages. So to me, the whole idea of, you know, of having to hang your hat on the notion of a two-car garage, especially with what's going on today, in, you know, with the environment, with gas prices, with all else, I think you're really, you know, basically making this project based on ideas that are passed. And I think for, you know, an organization such as yours, which at least in my understanding has a reputation as being a progressive builder with some innovative ideas, that you could be using this project right here to actually be at the forefront of what's going to be coming in the century, not looking back to what's happened. You know, and I'm thinking just from, from an economic perspective, that you're really hitching your wagon to a train that's left, and that, you know, you could actually be working with the community to create something that the community would accept, you could be proud of, and that you could actually be presenting as the wave of the future for other developments that you'd be making.
George French from Albany Avenue. I think you were, Bob, you were here about two years ago, was it Ben?
God, I don't know. I mean, two, four, six, eight, I mean, yeah, a long time, many years.
The last time, last hearing I remember you being here, I asked you a question I don't think I've ever got the answer to. And that was a question about how many trees are on the metro site at this time? And you said you'd get back to us. I wonder if you ever determined how many trees are there?
I know there's a tree study that's been done, but I don't have that answer for you tonight.
Well, I had mentioned a figure of about 200. I think it's down from that now. But, and I wonder how many trees now you plan to save on the--
The trees that are being saved were shown in the, in the village green on the plan, on the landscape plan.
How many is that?
I don't know exactly. I'm coming in, I don't have a plan.
Okay. Well, the other question I have is about the parking. I'm confused about the garage. The garage has 123 spaces, which, and I guess it was--
Jack.
Jack has said there was 39 spaces on-street.
Yes, it says--
Is that right?
That's correct.
What streets are you talking about? Are you talking about Eastern and Cedar and--
No, 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 public street, on-site.
The internal streets of the, of your development?
Yes.
That's, and where are these cars going to park in front of the townhouses? Is that where the spaces are?
Yes.
And let's say you, the garage is filled and you have to circle your way or cycle your way out, and I guess you come in off of Eastern Avenue, and you turn into the main development here, and you're looking for spaces in the, in the community there in your development?
If you are a resident there and you--
No, no, if you're coming from off-site and you want to park and use the metro.
You'd come in off of Carol, you can't come in off of Eastern, come in off of Cedar, come down. If there aren't any spaces, you'd hit Eastern, make a left, and then go into the garage.
Let's say you're, you don't find any spaces in the garage, and you, you come back into the community to look for a space and into your development. And let's, and so then you would, you would come into, and it looks like to me that this is a one entrance and exit to the main development there.
Right.
So if you didn't find a space in there, you would have to turn around, back out, or back out or turn around or--
You'd go into the garage first, if I follow your question. You'd go into the garage first. 100% of the space in the garage are filled. You'd go back out on Eastern, go Eastern, make a right on Cedar, then back into the private with public access easement road. That's one way that takes you from Cedar back over to Eastern, and you'd have the opportunity to find the 39-meter spaces there.
But some of those are in the internal part of this development?
Just on that one street.
So that seems very problematical that you would want to go in there and then try to find an open space. And if you couldn't find a space there, you'd have to come out, back, back up, or turn around somehow and come back.
Right.
So it doesn't seem very idealistic, very ideal. So that's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
My name is Kurtix TruBarry. I live up on Ritchie Avenue in--
That's in Ward 4?
I'm sorry?
That's in Ward 4?
That is correct. That's in Ward 4. And I believe there's a council member who is actually on my street. And I, I work at Real Estate Affairs Conservancy, a national organization downtown DC. And I'm speaking as a citizen, not as, not from RDC, but I'd like to point out that we do a lot of national polling, and I'd like to support the gentleman's previous comment that I think, I think you are behind the times in terms of acknowledging the, the driving economic factors that individuals in today's age, especially individuals looking for residents in Tacoma Park are looking for. And that would be not two-car garages. That would be more transit-oriented development on a real and not just on a terminology basis. So I would reiterate and agree with pretty much everything that's been said thus far, but I won't, I won't repeat all that. But I will say that entirely from the selfish perspective and from an economic driver, I think that you would, we hope you'd reconsider.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Ready to go?
Thank you all for your comments. Thank you both for coming. Councilmember Snicker?
Yes, I have a kind of a follow-up question that we heard earlier concerning the handicapped access on the kiss-and-ride, that you come up Cedar Street, at the entrance off Cedar Street, and then there's a kiss-and-ride. Both, I hadn't thought about this, but folks getting out of their cars are going to exit their car into the traffic, and that's how the, if you have a, you know, a van or car for handicapped access, I just wondered if, how that would work. All right, so--
And the first part is, the question is, so you do drive your car into the traffic this one way, which is at least something. But for those people who are exiting a vehicle with, you know, wheelchairs or whatever, how does that work?
Yeah, that was the point raised earlier.
Yeah, that was the point raised earlier, and I'm not sure it got addressed or discussed.
Maybe I'm not following it. So you're looking at the kiss-and-ride on the, on the one-way street.
Over the left side, drivers on the left, passengers on the right, getting out of the street. Not a good answer, could you--
So the--
You might not understand the question.
Yeah. It sounds like it was a good question. You don't have an answer tonight.
That's a good question.
Thanks. Is there something else? Okay. I just, again, wanted to thank everybody for your attendance and for your good questions and comments. Thank Jack Lester and Bob Youngton from EYA for coming and presenting this. Remind folks that we've had a process that's been going on for years. We had other options that we wish could have been the case. As Mr. Grimes pointed out, we had the Womata change their joint development process partly as a result of this process. We wish we were under the new process, not the old process. We essentially have two tracks going along here where we're trying to change the, not only the icing but the cake. We're also trying to address the icing, if that's the only option left. So we will continue to try all of those options. And in, just a quick reference to the earlier question about the stakeholders, not of the, of the PUD process, but of the process that got us to this presentation tonight, that was, that was brought together by invitation from Transportation Secretary Prakari to meet with EYA and present the concerns that the city had addressed a year ago and to bring our consultants in to explain those concerns. And that EYA has responded to many of the questions that were raised at that point in that process, and that's what brought us to this point tonight on this part of the process. So thank you for attempting to address those concerns, and we will all continue in this process that we've been working on since 1999. Thank you, and we adjourn. So thank you for attempting to address those concerns, and we will all continue in this process that we've been working on since 1999. Thank you. And we're joined.